I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the June 26, 2017 Committee of the Whole meeting. Just for the record, all aldermen are present. The first item of business, number two, is approve Committee of the Whole minutes from June 12, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Cummings and seconded by Alderman Marx. Voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to items of business. Item 3A, recommend approval of resolution authorizing execution of fiscal year 2016-2017 budget amendments.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. Any discussion? Alderman Marx.
Stephanie, I know it's number seven. It's the Workman's Comp Fund. So I get what you said. So did we actually end up out of our own budget spending $500,000?
No.
I guess I wasn't clear with the question.
No, so that was a reimbursement from our third-party reinsurer. And as we always say, if you take in revenue and you have to show the revenue and the expense, so we paid that because that was the settlement, but the reinsurer then paid us that same amount.
But we have to pay $500,000 first.
But that happened years ago.
Oh, okay.
This is a claim from 2007. So we had hit that self-insurance retention probably several years ago. And then, once we hit that retention, it goes into the reinsurer's hands. And we are no longer liable, responsible, have any say.
So each, just for clarification, so each incident is $500,000?
Each claim.
Or each claim is $500,000?
Is our max.
So it's not overall for the city each year?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
So we actually though did, even with the reinsurer, we spent $970,000 last year in total from, because we had budgeted $431?
Uh, I would have to look.
Well, it's just, I'm sorry, it's...
Well, we budgeted $431,000. I don't know.
Because we amended the budget up to $970,000.
I don't know what the actual expenses were.
Oh, okay. Because we budgeted the, we're amending the budget to $970,000.
Right, because we're adding that to the budget we already had.
Okay.
But that doesn't necessarily, it hasn't been audited and we don't.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Just clarification. Any other questions? We'll have a voice vote on that then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 3C, recommend, I'm sorry, 3B, recommend approval of resolution authorizing an agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services for a compensation study in an amount not to exceed $29,500.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Burkhart. Any comments or questions? Any from the audience? Voice vote for that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Voted unanimously. Now, item 3C, recommend approval of resolution declaring a 2003 Chevy truck, a Steel MS260 gas chainsaw, a Steel O26 gas chainsaw, and an HL15R Tonica gas drill as surplus.
So moved.
Moved by Marx.
Second.
Seconded by McGowan. Any questions or comments? Voice vote for this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item 3D, recommend approval of resolution authorizing the purchase of a Thompson six-inch pump through the National Joint Powers Alliance at a cost not to exceed $31,327.
So moved.
Moved by Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Ruby. Any questions or comments? Voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved unanimously. Item 3E, recommend approval of resolution authorizing the professional services agreement with CDM Smith, Chicago, Illinois, to perform construction management services for the 2017 WWTP Facility Update Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed $1,048,622.
So moved.
Moved by Marx. Second.
Second.
By Burkhardt. Any questions or comments? Voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item 3F, recommend approval of resolution authorizing the professional services agreement with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick in an amount not to exceed $92,746 for water main and storm sewer improvements on Dunston Road and Sunset Road.
So moved.
Moved by Marx.
Second.
Seconded by McGowan. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Voted unanimously. Item 3G, recommend approval of resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2016 Ford Transit Connect from Morrow Brothers Ford in an amount not to exceed $26,285.
So moved.
Moved by Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Burkhardt. Questions? Comments?
Just one comment. I did like to, I did, no, don't have to stand up. I'd just like to see that you actually did try to compare the leasing. That is helpful. Thank you. No comment, just a comment. Saying, "Good job, guys."
Hearing no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item 3H, recommend approval of resolution authorizing the granting of a utility easement to the Commonwealth Edison Company by the City of Geneva for the Chrissy site, PIN 12-11-101-002.
So moved.
Moved by Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Ruby. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item 3I, recommend approval of ordinance number 2017-17, amending Title VII, Chapter IV, Special Parking Privilege Spaces, tabled from the 61217, and the city administrator recommends no action.
So moved.
A second.
Do we need to move this to a date certain?
Well, actually, that's what I was going to say. So because it's a cow and it's a recommending body, there's really no need to move it to a date certain. What I would recommend is that I will just, we haven't notified everybody yet. We haven't had an opportunity. So once we get the notifications done and it's ready to come back to the council, we will bring it back at that time, rather than to keep setting a date certain and moving it forward. Had this been a city council meeting, it would have made more sense to move it to a date certain. But just being a recommending body, we just take it off the table, and then when it's ready, we'll bring it back.
Okay. Do we need a vote?
Is that the motion for that? There's no vote for that.
I don't think so. There's no vote. We probably didn't need a motion, but because it was tabled last time to a date certain, we needed to bring it back up so that you understand what happened.
Alderman Rodecky.
So it was just a matter of not, you know, getting too notifying them, so we stay all things going on like that.
Exactly.
But you do intend to notify, move forward with the process.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Moving on to item four, new business. Does anyone have any new business?
Oh, you all thought you were going to go home early. Hi, my name is Lauren Byron. I live at 122 North Fourth Street in Geneva. As you have probably heard, about a month or so ago, Donald Trump pulled the United States out of the Paris Climate Agreement. In the intervening time, some 300 mayors and cities have all signed on to say that they will still honor the Paris Climate Accord. I noticed that Geneva is not on the list, and I've come to ask if you will consider joining this compact of mayors and cities that say they will work to reduce climate change and greenhouse gas emissions.
Any questions?
I'll say, I did get that request from a resident recently as well, and so I wanted to make some inquiries into that. So has anyone else heard from any other residents on the same subject?
I have not an email, just, you know, out and about, face-to-face type stuff. And it's something I support. I think it's, it shows a stance. I would support something like that.
As would I. I think it'd be good that we certainly have that discussion.
I would agree as well. So I would support that as well.
Me too. I'd like to have a discussion. It sounds like we need to have a discussion about it and what that would mean for the city, but it sounds like there's enough interest to discuss it, for sure.
In direct response to the questioner, oftentimes, the materials that are forwarded to communities via the National League of Cities or other organizations don't often make their way to small communities like ours. I have heard comments like that before. I've received a couple of phone calls. I have not, to my knowledge, received any emails about it, unless I've missed them and they go under my junk box. But by all means, I think it's worthy of a discussion. And from a purely personal standpoint, I think the president's move was short-sighted and selfish, and I would be supportive of taking a stance like Alderman Cummings stated.
Alderman Rodecky.
So here's the other side of the story. Regardless of your personal opinion, do you think it's appropriate that any time that a president or a governor or any elected representative take a position on something, that it's incumbent upon us to come forward with a position? I understand this, and personally, I have my own views, and they're very similar to everybody else's here. But I guess it's a philosophical question of, you know, is it appropriate for us to take positions formally on things like this when a president takes a position on something? Whether you agree with it personally or not, I mean, I guess it's a broader question that I throw off at the group. Should we be having debates or discussions or lining up one way or the other when a president makes a decision on something? Just for a larger question to discuss, since we've got a lot of time tonight still.
I think that's a great question. So I think of decisions that are made at the federal level as ranging from one end of the spectrum to the other. And a lot of decisions that are getting made that are sort of in the center are not what I would call especially egregious to an especially large group of people. However, when something comes up that is especially egregious to an especially large group of people, then I believe that, yes. So how do we define especially egregious to an especially large number of people? Well, I think we throw it out there, and if we get five or six immediately on city councils, say, you know, this is worth a discussion. I think that it's self-evident that it's worth a discussion. But if it's sort of day after day, federal law, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, I doubt that it'll come in front of us, and I doubt that that question will get asked of us.
I also don't know, taking a position on how we manage our resources going forward is not exactly the same as taking a position that necessarily opposes that position that the president took. I think that supporting the recommendations of the Paris Climate Accord and signing up to say that we choose to follow that is just like us saying we choose to be green, or we choose to be responsible, or that's what we view as being responsible. And I don't know that Donald Trump or the president or the Congress in Washington said anything about any community being limited in their ability to make decisions like that. So I don't know that I would look at it as a statement for or against what was decided in Washington as much as I would look at it as a decision by this city about what we want to do as far as the environment goes is concerned going forward. Two different things, I guess.
You know, I guess the thing that begs the question, and you know, as Don said, you know, is it egregious to a large group of people is a hard thing to define. And, you know, we're elected representatives for wards in the City of Geneva, and, you know, am I elected to speak? Personally, I've not had anybody ask me this question. And my guess is, there's probably been less than four people that have asked the question in the entire city. But now we're going to debate this, and we're going to debate a decision by the President of the United States. I don't know that that's really within my purview to do, or that's what I was elected to do by my constituents. I think their needs and their discussion and what they want to hear is about local matters. We have plenty to deal with at the local level. We have plenty to deal with at the state level. So I think it's, again, not taking a position on this particular subject, but I think in general, you know, to have debates about decisions at that level, is that really what this body should be doing right now, is the question. And I'm open to both sides of the discussion right now. I'm not shutting one side out or the other, but I don't know that that's what the folks that elected us to do were hoping that we would do. Because, you know, the thought that it's egregious to a large group of people, I have the largest ward, I have 40% of the voters, and nobody's come up and said a word to me about it. So that's something to think about. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno, and then we have a question from the audience.
Thank you. Well, to take that federal decision to the next step, it could easily be argued this is a local control issue. Seems like a lot comes down to local control. Let's go local with this, then. I think we are elected to express the values, and I've long said that we are not elected to be a referendum, to just average the number of votes from our constituents, but to understand the issues and express our values on behalf of our constituents. This does align with my values, and I'd be perfectly, perfectly happy to exercise that with a discussion on this. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Brian Nord. I live at 122 North Fourth Street. This is awesome that you all want to talk about this and sort of debate it a little bit right now. If we wanted to sort of push aside national politics, we can, I think, reframe this to, in a few different ways, to local issues. If we want the Harrington Spa in to be around in 20 years, or if we don't want the Fox Valley River to be an arid bed, then we might want to have a serious conversation about the implications for extreme weather, or extra water flowing down, or no water flowing down that river. So I think that we don't even have to think about what the president did, and we can think about what we need to do as a city to maintain a fruitful and long-term community. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I guess my question is, shouldn't we be doing that as a matter of practice on a daily basis? I mean, is this more a reaction to a decision from a president to make a statement politically? Or should we, I know you guys are... Or shouldn't we just really be doing this as a matter of practice as good stewards locally
I don't know how long it took us to get the Kyoto Agreement that we didn't jump into. I think it took, was it a decade or more to get the Paris Climate Agreement, where even China bought into it? So there is this moment that we have. There is this lightning in a bottle, and we need to run with it. And if we don't, it is at our peril. So regardless of what any national administration is doing at any one time for any one event, this is a global event that is affecting humanity, and we need to be on the conveyor belt with the rest of the world to make sure that, A, we don't fall behind in terms of our innovation and having jobs, if we're worried about jobs in Illinois or anywhere else, and to make sure that we're going to, you know, have a place for our kids to run through the grass at some point. So regardless of a reaction, this is a moment for us to join forces with a lot of other people who want to do something that's important for everybody.
And just as a follow-up, I mean, part of that's on me. I did frame it as recently President Trump did this thing, but I think that's just because we now have an opportunity to react because this thing has happened. But, I forget where I was going to go with this. It's not my intention that we make a stance, like have a stand as the City of Geneva. It's that there are hundreds of mayors and cities that have said, "This is important to us as communities." We know that some, much higher than 50% of the American population, believe that we should not have pulled out of this accord. So if we have the opportunity to do something as a local group and to sign on to this bigger movement, I don't want us to just be taking a stand. I mean, this, joining the compact of mayors actually has things that you need to do. You make an inventory of your greenhouse gas emissions. You talk about your climate plan for the future. You talk about how you can reduce, and then you take steps to actually implement that. So regardless of what is happening, I think that's something that we should be doing as a city and doing our part. And yeah, we may be a small city, but if everybody pitches in, then it makes a larger difference, so.
You know, your point's well taken, but I guess my overriding feeling, and I've said this before, is that this body should be a non-political group. Whether you believe that or not, or that we all have politics behind what we say or do, I think that local governments function best because they are non-political. So if we want to take this discussion as a general matter, of course, I'll accept it as that, but I think it's very dangerous to become either supportive or non-supportive on a political basis for anybody or anything. And I mean, that goes for not the larger issues we're talking about today, but even the smaller issues. So I just think that these groups and local governments function better when they are not, when they do not have partisan politics behind them. And if we are going to discuss this as a matter, of course, in a non-political discussion, then I think it's a fruitful discussion. But if it has any implications of partisan politics to it, then I think it undermines what we do here or the effectiveness of this group, because we are elected as a non-political group. We do not run, as we all say, in, you know, primaries. We don't declare what parties we're with, and I think that's what keeps local governments pure and functioning. We function better than any governmental bodies out there now, local governments do. And I'm always concerned about the erosion of entering partisan politics into this process. Scares me sometimes. So, thank you.
Just one thought. In many ways, I tend to agree with what you've shared with us, Lauren, but I tend to agree with Alderman Rodecky in that there's enough partisanship, and the nation's polarized to such a great extent already. I don't know if this is a real forum where a position that we could take either up or down on this type of, really, an international issue is really the domain where we need to be. You know, I think we could be called hypocrites if somebody's watching tonight. We're, you know, do we believe in clean air? Well, we do to an extent, but we're an investor in one of the largest coal companies in the state of Illinois. So is that contradictory? I would think that people could come and call us hypocrites if we put ourselves in that position. So I think the best thing is, is really not to take a stance. I guess we have enough on our plate as it relates to the City of Geneva and the geography that Geneva entails that to provide this as a forum for debating national, international issues, I think. If we take that type of a stance, then in two weeks, we're going to have somebody here bringing forth another national issue where they're going to try to create a forum or to draw attention to an issue that they feel deeply in. You know, we got the Kane County Chronicle. We've got the Daily Herald, where if people have an opinion, they can write letters to the editor and express those views. There's a lot of other organizations that provide a forum for that. You know, I think it's a topic that would be best left to those other organizations and other forums rather than this Geneva City Council. That's my thought.
It used to be called global warming because it's going to happen everywhere. This is not a political, international issue. This is everyone. So I'm just a little baffled. I'm maybe not baffled anymore, but it's interesting that we would potentially step away from an opportunity to be on the right side of history regardless of what the politics are. I really don't care who voted which way for the Paris Climate Agreement. The science is there. The farms that support this town are going to be gone if we don't do something. The river is going to be gone potentially, or it's going to overflow, and we're not going to have houses along the river. So it's, yeah, somewhere between baffling and not baffling. I'm of two minds.
Thank you. Alderman Burkhart.
Personally, I'd like to continue this discussion. I don't think, you know, we're glad Lauren brought it up tonight. Some of us are maybe not prepared to really, I'd like to do some more research into what it would mean for us to sign on to a compact. Like they mentioned, is that something that could create a guiding principle for us going forward? Like Alderman Kilburg mentioned, you know, another council years ago did decide to move forward with the coal plant in southern Illinois. Maybe it becomes more of a discussion about energy and green measures we can take in Geneva, but it seems like it's worth another discussion, so.
I would add to that, too, that we could also have a policy discussion as to whether we want to encourage, say, solar energy or other types of green power generation as a city. So there are things that we can do which have nothing to do with national politics.
Yeah, and I think that's the crux of the discussion here is, you know, are we taking a position against a particular political decision? I mean, if we really want to do something that's meaningful, let's not just take a position and say, "We disagree with what was done at the national level," but, you know, what are we actually going to do about that other than disagreeing with a, you know? And I think that's just wrong for us to do that, to debate that at this level, to say that it's a political decision. This is supposed to be a non-polit... Craig, give me a moment. This is supposed to be a non-political group of people, and I feel like we're getting sucked into that. Who would argue against the environment and the river drying up? And I've got kids and grandkids, and, you know, that, this is, that discussion to me baffles me because that's a no-brainer. I mean, you'd have to be a fool not to want to protect the environment, but I don't know that taking a position that's in opposition to a political decision that was made is the way to do that effectively. I mean, we have a Natural Resources Committee. We're a tree city. We cherish a lot of these things. I get all this. So if we want to have a discussion and do something meaningful, you know, rather than a resolution, you know, opposing a political decision at a level, I think there's more effective ways to do that. So maybe you disagree with me, Craig.
Alderman Meladra, and then Lauren.
Yeah, it's like I said earlier, I don't know that this would be a, taking a position that says, "I oppose what was done in Washington." I think, to maybe build on what Tara was saying, if we were to set ourselves a task of building out part of our, part of the framework in which we approach decisions would include some guiding principles that perhaps we would draw from the Paris Climate Accords or otherwise. As you mentioned, we have a Natural Resources Committee. We are a tree city. We have emphasized environmental issues as part of our strategy for years, in spite of the fact that we did buy into Prairie State, which has a whole bunch of technology to make it, if you've got to deal with shitty energy, it's the least shitty of the bunch. Nonetheless, we need, what I think we do, instead of saying we're taking a position opposed to what Donald Trump did, that we could set ourselves the task of building part of our strategic framework around, what would it mean to build part of our strategic decision-making framework around the Paris Climate Accords? And I don't know the answer to that, but that would be a worthy discussion, which is not a political discussion. It's not saying anything about what was said or done in Washington. It's saying, "How do we want to make our decisions going forward?" And the thing about the solar thing was pretty telling. We did face that decision a few years ago.
We did face that decision a few years ago, and we decided one way. I don't know that we would decide differently, but at that time, we didn't really have any guiding principles that we could apply to it, to the decision. So I don't view it as a political opposition discussion. It's more a discussion about how we can work the environment into our strategic plan.
Lauren, and then Ruby.
So I fear I have done a bad job of explaining what the Compact of Mayors is. It is not a way to stick it to people in Washington, Trump or any others. It is not to say, you are wrong and we are right. It is totally separate to acknowledge that 97 percent of climate scientists agree that global warming is happening, climate change is man-made, and that we, as a city, want to sign on with other cities who acknowledge that and want to take steps to help do our part to reduce our levels of greenhouse gas emissions.
Alderman, Ruby, if you have a question.
Yeah, no, I just, I agree with most of the comments. I do think, just from an environmental standpoint, that it's a no-brainer, that we should be at least taking the next step to support this. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Just as a reminder to the council, which I know is well aware of this, perhaps to Lauren and Brian, who might not be, the city of Geneva, years ago, when developing their 2017 strategic plan, incorporated language with respect to environmental consciousness. Our strategic plan is due for an update. My recommendation would be that as we gather the community for that update, if this issue organically percolates to the top, then we can build that framework to move forward. But it's also worth noting that all of us brag about this regularly. 10 percent of Geneva's energy needs are derived from methane recapture, the ultimate green effort. We are a Tree City USA. We were heavily criticized by our own citizens when we installed brick pavers at the water treatment facility, or, excuse me, water drinking facility. Yet we did so knowing that while it cost more, it was environmentally friendly, and it actually saved us in the long run. We also know that we have replaced virtually every light bulb in this building several times through a grant from multiple organizations as part of that green effort. We had a green committee at City Hall for a good 10 years. We could not fund it anymore, yet we continue to do green things. At the risk of shocking the heck out of everybody, I agree in part with Alderman Rodecky, that while we can stand, while we can stand up and say, we're green, we need to brag about what we've actually achieved as well. And I was the one who made the statement that perhaps could be interpreted as political. What we've accomplished is, I think, pretty impressive, but we don't talk about it a lot, and that's perhaps our fault. Moving forward, I suspect that we'll have more opportunities to participate in green initiatives. We are, as a council and a community, a cosignator to the Greenest Region Compact, which is multiple communities throughout Chicagoland. Our friends in Batavia host a green initiative forum, I believe it's every year. We've participated at staff and elected official level. So I think more than just a feel-good issue, this is genuine and real, absolutely it is. No question about it. We developed the plan years ago where we had a goal every year of reducing fuel usage by 5 percent every year in our public works facility. We adopted a plan that encouraged, when available and when appropriate, that we would not leave cars running while visiting scenes, whether it be police or otherwise. All part of that effort to not only reduce what most common people and smart people would assume is, and regularly know, is dangerous, but also save us cash. We know that. So yes, I believe that this city would be wise to advance that regard. I think the chairman should ask whether or not there's consensus to bring a resolution along those lines forward for consideration in a future meeting.
Do we have consensus to bring this topic up again?
Yes.
I mean, in what form? I mean, the mayor kind of led you into having a resolution. I mean, I think it's worthy of discussion, absolutely. But I don't know that we need a motion to bring this up to have a discussion about it. I mean, if we're proposing, and I think it's a little premature to propose some, a resolution at this point, I mean, that's kind of doing it on the fly. If somebody wants to bring it back up, or, you know, it's fine to discuss a resolution, but I don't know that we have a discussion.
Consensus to talk about it in the future, I think, is how I would look at it.
Okay.
Fifth Monday meeting?
October 30th, but a lot of times we don't have that one because we have the strategic plan, again, strategic plan work session on that Friday. But again, we are going through a whole process. We're in the process of hiring a consultant to do the strategic, the facilitation part of the strategic plan. The SPAC is actually looking to write the plan, and so I think this certainly is one of those items that could be a guiding principle or come up through that process, and there might be time at that point to have further discussion.
There seems to be consensus for discussion. Okay. Any other new business? I wanted to mention to the chamber that I thought they did a fantastic job with Swedish Days. I thought it was very successful, the weather cooperated, and it was a job well done. So thank you, Geneva Chamber, and thank you, Geneva.
Alderman Burkhardt.
I wanted to say the same to the chamber for leading that effort, and of course, our police department, Public Works, and all the other city employees that make Swedish Days run so smoothly. They got cooperation from Mother Nature for sure this week, but I was down there almost every day, and just great entertainment, great food, great family fun, so a very good Swedish days. Thanks.
In addition to that, there were a lot of volunteers that worked with the, is it the fire department? My neighbor was one of them. They're out at every event, and they're there the entire time, and it's strictly volunteer work, and they're very dedicated, and we wouldn't have these events without them. They really make it possible. So big thank you to all the volunteers.
And moving on to item number five, adjournment. Do I hear a motion?
Adjourn.
Marks and Bruno. Thank you very much.
We need a voice vote.
Oh, we need a voice vote. Thank you. Okay. All in favor of adjourning? Oh, I'm sorry.
Something, I didn't know the orders that you were going to adjourn.
Okay, we're not adjourned yet.
Okay.
Please, please come on up, please come up.
Okay.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Madeline Roth. I live at 520 Ray Street, and I just want to take a few minutes to address the mayor and the city council with a couple of important things about my development of my property, Woodlands Development on the corner of Ray and 31. I just want to clarify some things to make sure there are no misunderstandings that I'm running into. And to some of you, you've heard this before, but I know there are new aldermen this year. First of all, I want to say my house and my property is not on the National Register. I've owned it for 25 years, and we did not put it on the National Register, and from my research, you have to, it's a voluntary thing. This past year, I was concerned that someone was putting my house on the register, and at that time, I didn't know it was voluntary. So I periodically emailed Rachel Lebovitz from the IHPA and asked her if my home was on the National Register, if anyone was putting it on the National Register. So I brought copies of her emails to me that say, no, it's not. The reason I'm saying this is I'm running into people that believe it is on the National Register and that there's a problem. And secondly, Jens Jensen. I did extensive research on Jens Jensen and the connection to my property. Starting in March of 2016, I made a trip to the Bentley Historical Library in Ann Arbor, Michigan. I met with Joel Baldwin of Hitchcock Design, a Chicago firm that restores historic landscape designs, and restored Jensen Parks in Chicago and Michigan. And Joel introduced me to Robert Greasy, who is considered the number-one authority on Jensen. And he did an analysis for me and of my property, and his conclusion is, it is not Jens Jensen. So I have copies of this information, if anyone would like to read it, because I am running into people who think otherwise. So are you interested? I can pass it on. So I just wanted to publicly get that information out.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Continuing on with item five, we had a motion and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is concluded. Thank you.